One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The next meeting is getting both video and audio tapes, and if anybody in the audience is doing so, please inform the board. Young lady. Mr. Gagnon.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes on November seventeenth and November twenty-fourth as written.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All okay?
Aye.
All business. Mr. Gagnon, do you have anything?
No, I'm pleased.
I have a couple things. The veterans' position has been posted. It went in free newspapers, it's on the website, and will be up on the Cable Access Channel, hopefully by today or tomorrow. The Purple Heart signs, for being a Purple Heart community, we are in the works of doing those, we got a quote, we're looking to put about four signs up in the community. Highway has some poles to be able to install those, so we are working on that. And last, we had a request last week regarding if we would contact council regarding the police chief's contract, and if certain members of our board can negotiate that contract. We reached out to council, and I have a response from council regarding that, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm just going to read a couple sentences here. And this is coming from Town Council, Tim Zezen, from Copeland Page. "In my opinion, Chief Bearhouse's alleged involvement in the above matters would not cause a reasonable person to conclude that either selectmen would exercise improper influence during contract negotiations with the chief." So with that being said, this board can fully negotiate with the chief as three members when the contract is being negotiated next spring. So I just wanted to put that out there in open meeting, because it was required that we ask that question. As far as anything else in open business, or other business, um, all business, that's it? We'll move on to comments and concerns. Yes, sir.
Yeah, hi, Gary, I have a concern, I passed by the town hall the other day, and I looked down the stairwell going to the new door, and I see accumulation of leaves and debris down here, I was wondering if somebody could clean it up, maybe the highway department or maintenance personnel. Just a concern, because we're, you know, we're trying to keep the moisture out of that building, and I'm going to build up.
Mr. Lavash will look into it, we may have time, or the chief will check into it tomorrow Wednesday. Anybody else with comments and concerns?
I'm requesting on December twelfth to get a member of the board, Seth, myself, and whoever else you want to bring. I have some tapes for the bell tower, Christmas carols, I just want to put them in and make sure they're working.
Next Saturday?
It's a Saturday.
Mr. Jones, what time were you planning?
Ten o'clock.
The board has a commitment that morning, so it'd have to be after that.
What time?
You're doing inspections that morning.
I think it was probably two hours for that. Probably wouldn't be until noon time, I would say. Class two, class three inspections. Ten isn't scheduled for that Saturday. It's a couple hours, I know. So probably wouldn't be until at least noon time.
I would make the same comment that I've been making for two weeks, that's a closed building, and by ADA law, nobody should be allowed in that building.
But seeing, I understand, I mean, we're just, we're looking to meet like we did last year regarding in the clap tower, to see if certain tapes actually will play inside. I mean, do I have a loan out there to do that, I don't have a problem. I mean, I can volunteer my own time at noon time to meet there. So if I see if we can maybe see if Seth is available on that, sure. We can call the party, Stanley, and find out if Seth can make it, I mean, I can't speak for him, we'll have to reach out to him and find out, but we can get back on it. I have the date written down, so it wouldn't be until at least noon time.
Stay informed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Loretta, you reach out to Seth, please.
Yeah, well.
Anybody else? No? All right, Mr. Gagnon, we'll move on to correspondence.
The office received a memo from Town Planner Bill Scanlon regarding green communities. The memo explains the benefits and requirements for Warren to become a green community under the Department of Energy Resources. Warren is in the western region, and Mr. Jim Barry is the regional coordinator. Mr. Barry will come, I'm sorry, Mr. Barry is willing, there we go, to come before the board of selectmen and provide additional information if desired.
I think we should probably reach out, so I know Mr. Scanlon had sent me a couple emails about how to come forward and discuss this. I don't have a problem until Vasch, if he comes in, and discusses, I think it's a good idea.
Did you have that meeting in mind?
Well, we're possibly next week. Sooner or better. And also for correspondence. I'm going to table the appointments for dispatchers until next week. We have Warren Cat, well, cat cable regulation, possible discussion, possible vote. Igor is here to discuss this with us. Again, I know we have some time since the documents that have to be in by December eighth, so I will turn it over to you, sir. I know you've been in correspondence with Loretta, so the floor is yours.
We received a letter from Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications, actually you people did, and it's a notice regarding cable rate regulations. This letter was forwarded to us, which is the Board Cable Advisory Committee, and upon receiving the letter, I called it gentleman, and from franchise issuing authority. What's happening is that, and please understand, this is only for the basic cable. It's not for the premium channels or anything, this is just for the basic cable channels, I think it's two to fourteen or two to sixteen. And I was asked by the administrative secretary to put it for discussion for the cable advisory committee, see what the cable advisory committee thinks about it. So our recommendation to you as a cable franchise issuing authorities, which, because you guys sign a contract, will be that you recommend to them to keep everything in place as it is. In other words, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts being in charge of regulating the basic tier rates. Reason for that is that those rates, we know a lot of people in Warren have them, and senior citizens, most of them using that, it's whatever rates are, it seems to be, I would say, fair rate, which is nobody going to say it is fair, because they, but at least we have some, state will have some control over that, because you know what happens if you go to premium channels, you know how they, how much it costs you. At least maybe we can keep this way in the range, you know, I don't know what it is, twelve, fourteen, fifteen dollars a month versus jumping any way high. So our recommendation to, there's a deadline by December eight. This late deadline might get extended, because understanding is, right now, they're going, they're negotiating with the cable companies, satellite companies, that's how the whole thing, and different providers, they're trying to reach an agreement. If they cannot reach any agreement, then we'll go to FCC. But just to be a cover by the December eight, whichever decision is made, is going to be out of our hands, but our recommendation to you, if you choose so, do that way, will be just, we want to be regulated, basic tier rates. And the reason for that is that we feel that those rates would be lower for the, most of the people that want it that way, instead of, you know, going up and down or whatever, they will be regulated.
Okay.
So thank you.
So Igor, I got a question for you, is this for just a year, how long would this be?
To tell you the truth, I don't know how long this is going to go.
Okay, so we could be revisiting this shortly.
Could be, possibly, yes.
You're asking us to send a letter from the office, which we need to get out by tomorrow, because it's due by December eight, to retain the current rates.
Correct, that you want to be under, they'll be regulated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, instead of giving authority to the cable companies, satellite companies, or whoever wants to set up something like that. The basic tier rates, we got to want to stress that, just the basic tier rates.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Gagnon?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all on paper?
Aye.
And one more thing you might be saying, since I got the floor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too, it was not agenda. We are looking for volunteers slash you receive some stipend if you do any coverage what we do right now. We're looking for some volunteers to join Cable Advisory Committee. We've been advertising it back and forth for, I don't know, six or seven months, been running in two, three week spans, and we didn't even receive one application. So I want to go in public right now and say it, we're looking for two positions we can get at. Anyone that would like to join Warren Cable Advisory Committee. You should be or must be resident of town of Warren, or taxpayer and voting resident of town of Warren, and you might, must be eighteen years old at least.
Is that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Anybody interested, please send that to WCAT, forty-eight High Street.
Do you have that on the Cable Access Channel, that request?
Pardon?
Is that request on the cable channel?
It's going to be going tonight again.
Was it today, and I didn't see that?
No, it wasn't today, we, I said we run over six months for two or three weeks, and then expires, we don't get nothing, so we do it. I'm just saying public right now, and tonight's going to go in and get put through our gates.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Great. Okay, Stanton Foundation, the grant application for the K-9 program, possible discussion, discussion, excuse me, and vote. And we have a pretty big audience here for this tonight, and we had some discussion about this last week. So we're going to have discussion regarding this, I've asked the chief and Officer LaFleur to be present tonight to hopefully answer any questions that I possibly can't answer. The board did sign a letter of support for this, I want to say maybe three weeks, four weeks ago, Loretta. So we've had some discussion on this, so we're looking to have discussion and possibly put this to rest tonight, and have the chair sign the grant application to move forward. So at this time, I would like to open it up for discussion, please make sure to direct your questions to the chair, to the board, so that we can answer them, or call on someone who is capable of being able to answer the question or respond to it. So I will open it up for discussion, who would like to start regarding the grant application? Yes, Mr. LaFleur. Good evening.
I'd like to know how many crimes are actually solved with a canine in Warren?
That one, I have to refer to that.
I, that question's impossible to answer, because we never had one. We haven't had a canine, but we have had dogs here before.
I know you've had dogs from outside, that's why I was curious, but nothing's ever been solved with a dog.
The purpose of the canine is not so much to solve a crime.
What is it?
As just to assist in the apprehension of people who have run from the police, doing canine sniffs for narcotics, and things of that nature, but to actually solve a crime, the dog is not capable of solving a crime, it's capable of any assistance certainly, and will use it for a track or things of that nature.
Absolutely.
Would the dog be housed in Warren?
No.
We actually discussed this last week, Mr. Rubel, it would be with Officer LaFleur, correct, chief?
Yes.
Who does not live in town, but lives on the town, near the town border.
He lives right on the border.
It would be at his residence when the, when the, I should say officer, the canine is not on duty. Yes.
Is, is he already, will he be trained with the canine?
He meaning the officer?
Yes.
Yes, there is training involved, and Mr. Chief, if you'd like to respond to that, or add to that, part of the grant application does include the training process, and we actually had discussion about this today regarding payroll and payment to the officers and covering officers, so I'm going to let the chief just respond to that a little bit regarding that.
Sure, the grant from the Stanton Foundation is for a base of twenty-five thousand dollars over three years. That cost covers the training for the officer, the purchase of the dog, the purchase of retrofitting a cruiser with the necessary equipment, and it also covers backfill, so if I have to fill the officer's shift at overtime while he's in training, the grant also covers that. So the training runs anywhere from eleven to fourteen weeks. The dog that we're, well, the place we're interested in buying the dog from, dog is about a year old, it already, it's like a cafeteria plan. You tell the people at the foundation what type of dog you want, what you want it to do, and then you go down and you select the dog, and they fit the dog that works for you with the trainer.
And this is a drug sniffing dog, and?
We're interested in a dog that, for patrol and also for narcotics, yes.
Yeah.
And we can add a third specialty onto that, which the grant will also cover.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just one person is going to be in control of this dog?
Yes.
So what happens if he's on vacation, or gets sick?
Director, the chair, please.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to be able to answer that one, sir. Go ahead.
I thought you said, oh, nevermind. I was just wondering if, what happens if this individual goes on vacation, and the dog, you know, the response for the, you know, for the dog?
So if the officer has a vacation, he's on vacation, he or she's on vacation, and the dog is required, who would operate the canine at that point in time?
Yes.
I would have to ask the chief that question also.
You know, we actually addressed this question today. Once the officer is trained and the canine is put into service, the officer's going to be training with a whole network of canine handlers from across the state. And what the handlers do is, they take care of each other, I might have people from the state police, I know where PD is, actually has a dog through the Stanton Foundation. Palmer has a dog, Sturbridge has a dog, I spoke to the chief in Oxbridge, they also have a dog from Stanton. Once all these trainers get together and start training together, if one of them goes on vacation, or has a week-long weekend somewhere, they'll take the dog to the other officer's kennel, and they'll kennel for the weekend. But in the same respect, if we needed a canine while that officer was gone, we'd just reach out to the person with the canine unit, and they'll, they'll still bring the dogs with them.
Right. Yes, Mr. Rubel.
Eight thousand dollars a year, a little over, doesn't seem like enough to cover all this.
To cover the dog itself, as far as food and housing and that?
The grant is for twenty-five thousand.
Correct.
Over three years. Now we're going to pay an officer, we have to retrofit a cruiser, we have to pay the officer while he's in training, plus I'm sure he'll need a raise, because he has this special handler, she's a handler, he is a handler for the dog. Do you think eight thousand dollars, a little plus over, is going to cover it?
After three years, I mean, I'm going to let the chief respond to that, but I, I'm telling you to respond first, Bruce. Regarding the overtime and the hours that we discussed today regarding while the officer's being trained, and the foundation's responsibility to that aspect.
The Stanton Foundation covers the training for the officer that pays his salary while he's in. It also pays for two thousand dollars a week, so if the training is fourteen weeks, in addition to the twenty-five thousand, and if the training lasted hypothetically, if it lasted fourteen weeks, we'd get another fourteen thousand dollars on top of that.
So there is actually additional monies there. I, I have spoke to Bruce about this a couple different times, we spoke again today about it. Personally, I think it's actually a good option for the town at this point in time, there's a lot of money being put up for this. When you look at the cost of the animal itself, and the cost to, let's say, hire an officer at a benefited rate, I mean, our chief is going to have some changes in his department coming up soon, you know, we've got contracts to negotiate, so I think there's a lot that's open to this, and how we're going to be able to afford to be able to do this down the road. But I had phone calls at my residence this weekend regarding that, I know Mr. Gagnon had a call also. I had a few residents stop me in town this weekend regarding their support for the canine, the incident that we had recently in town. I do think that there's a need for a canine, and I think that there's a way that we can afford to have this done, and not taking advantage of the amount of money that's being offered to be able to fund this, it's kind of hard to pass up. You know, when people sit there and state that they want to see our chief turn around and look for grants and that to fund cars and other things, and then find an option, being able to find a grant to fund a canine, I think he's doing his job. But I also think that, you know, this is an opportunity that our town should seriously look at and consider. But we have, I'm sorry, we have four other questions, Adam, I'm going to go first.
I just kind of, I wanted to touch on that exact thing, I think that, you know, a lot of people, you know, regardless of whatever their personal decisions are, you know, or opinions are, the reality is, is that, you know, department heads are being asked to find grants and stuff out there. When these grants become available, and there's opportunities on the table for it, I think it's a proactive thing for the town to seriously consider. I mean, you can't, you can't, you say you want one thing and not support it on the other side. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, there are several full-time officers, seven of them to be exact, in this town. The town, you know, the police force is, has grown, the responses have grown. We do lockdown drills all the time, we do school responses and active shooter training all the time. I mean, the world is changing, and I just, you know, would like to offer my support in regard to this issue, because, you know, I think that if the people, the townspeople knew what the police officers, what the fire department, what public safety in general is responding to nowadays, and the types of situations they'd be putting in, I think it's, you know, if an opportunity is there to have a canine there to protect the officers, you know, from volatile situations, to be trained in all these types of things, we are facing a drug problem in this town, the entire state of Massachusetts is facing a major drug problem.
Yeah.
And, you know what, if we can have another, another tool in our tool belt to be able to combat that type of situation, I think it would be absolutely, you know, I think it's absolutely critical that given this money is there, and the effort was put in to get the grant, and we have an officer that, you know, is, has experience with that type of dog, and is willing to do that, that I think it'd be a terrible thing to pass up, it really would.
I have a question, I was just wondering if a canine can be trained to go and find somebody that's lost, like a child or an elderly person with Alzheimer's that wandered off, would they be trained to find them?
Appreciate my first response.
I'd actually have, I know that that is possible, I don't know if that's possible with these dogs, is it?
It's part of patrol.
That would be a special training again, which the grant would cover.
Good to know, if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
I'd have to agree with what Mr. Gagnon said last week, that if this serves as a deterrent in town for a drug problem, or for somebody, you know, possibly wanting to commit a crime, that this is a home run. If it's, if it's a deterrent for people, we can't lose.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you have a question? Me? Okay, I live in a rural part of the town where there is nothing around, and I never see police, you know, police presence, because there is no really need for that, because nothing's happened. But I will say that this would help us immensely, because if something did happen, I mean, Katie, you know where I live. I live in the middle of the woods, and the dog would help, you know, and with all the drug problems that we are having, opioid, whatever, people are coming in and stealing people's things to get drugs.
Okay.
And I live in a place where I don't think a policeman probably could get, could find, I don't think they could find them. I think, I absolutely think it's necessary.
Thank you.
All right, once the grant is over, the three years, how much is it going to cost the town going forward from that time?
Okay, so I'm going to probably let you mention that one, Bruce, again, please.
You know, once the dog has been purchased and trained, and there is an in-service training for the dog, the handler has to go, which I think we, and correct me if I'm wrong, is about six hundred dollars a year for the training for you, and about another six hundred for the dog. And we're figuring in, just for the sake of argument, another eight hundred dollars in veterinary bills, which coincidentally, I'm being told that a lot of veterinary places will, will provide service of the dog for free, if it's a work dog. I'm also being told by other chiefs that there is an account that's set up for people in the community to volunteer for the contributions for the upkeep of the dog, and I actually spoke to a chief today whose dog is not yet in service. He started the donation account, advertised it on Facebook, his dog isn't going in the service for another couple of weeks. They already have a thousand dollars in the account. So the people in the community, and the chiefs that I've spoken to have been extremely supportive of the program, they said it's been very, very well received by all their communities.
Yes.
Okay, when they convert the cruiser, which cruiser will they be converting for the canine?
We took one of the, one of the Crown Victorias, and were trying to piece one out of two, and we're going to retrofit one of those cruisers.
Keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, you know, I fully intend to support another cruiser next year as a board member. I mean, we've replaced two, but we've put it off for a long period of time. If we don't start maintaining our town vehicles, and if we're able to put a highway truck out there and be able to do these things, we need to start looking at these other vehicles, we can't let them fall apart. So, you know, I know we took a lot of money from free cash and transferred it this fall, and I was opposed to that, and I wanted to hold on to that for these things, to put stuff in capital stabilization, but we wanted to put it towards other things. So we have to maintain our vehicles, whether it's police, fire, highway, so it's not like we're looking to purchase a vehicle for the animal. I think they're doing a good job in trying to retrofit the cars they have, but we still need to look at replacing a few vehicles. But it's not the purchasing new to supply it for a canine. Yes, Stanley?
What's the cost going to be increased on the police department's budget? Dollar numbers.
After the three years?
For the two years after the grant's gone. Why not use the government vehicle for the dog vehicle, you wouldn't tie up a Crown Victoria?
Sorry, which government vehicle, is it the Humvee?
Yep.
I don't know if you could outfit that, could you?
I don't think you can.
I, I don't think we could outfit that vehicle for a canine.
One of the requirements for canine vehicles, that has air conditioning.
Yeah. That is, that's a requirement actually for new animal shelters too, by the way. So the cost, I guess the second part or the first part of your question, Stanley, what's the cost after, two years after the grant run expires? Yeah, let's figure this out, sir.
I, it's, it's difficult to put those figures together, I think, you know, depending on the number of callouts that the officer has in that, you know, ensuing in the next three years, will give us a pretty good baseline for what we can figure into any budget increases. We can see what the veterinary bills are, we can see what the training costs, and then come up with a better projection. But in the other chiefs that I've spoken to, they said that really the cost is negligible compared to what you get. You're getting essentially, you're getting three years for free. And aside from the cost of the callouts, there's really, there are not a lot of costs involved.
I'll tell you something, folks, that animal, that canine makes one call, that saves one life, or finds one child, or helps one person in our town, is more than paid for the amount of money we're going to be applying to the budget, in my opinion. I don't know if Mr. Lavash, you have a comment you'd like to make, or?
No, I just think it's a, it's a really good, excuse me, really good program for a very little bit of money. I'm all for it.
Mr. Gagnon, ready?
I'd like to thank Officer LaFleur for coming and finding this, and the chief coming forth, being able to find this grant, and move forward to get this dog for the town. I love seeing all of these people here in support of this. This is fantastic, we need to see you guys more often.
So anybody else have a question? Comments, concerns, I don't know, Mr. LaFleur, if there's anything you want to add? I know you're here tonight, we haven't had a chance to.
Well, that's okay, I just, basically, I know there was some concern about me leaving if this dog was to, if you sign eager and you get this dog, and I can assure you, if that does happen, I'm not going anywhere, I don't plan to go anywhere now, I've been here for ten years. Especially if there's a canine here, it's not like I can just leave and go to another department and become a canine officer like that. So I have no intentions of leaving yet, I enjoy Warren, and I enjoy serving the people who's in town.
Thank you. Yeah, I have one question, and maybe before Officer LaFleur answers, when, if we have a canine, and the canine has a call, let's say in Sturbridge or something, let's say Sturbridge needs our canine for a call, how does the, is there a cost to fix that that would go to the community that requires us, or asks us for our animal to be called in?
Under the mutual aid agreements that we have, if we call, right, like in, in the past, and I don't have the specific dates, but there was a period of about six weeks where we had actually called for canines five times in six weeks. And the cost to this town for all of those canines that were sent here was zero dollars. The officers who responded from Sturbridge or Southbridge, I know we've had bloodhound out from Southbridge before, the officer from Ware, the state police, they don't bill us, but those officers are compensated through their agencies. So under the mutual aid agreement, if the officer was asked to go to another town and assist, that would get paid out of my budget. That doesn't happen, you know, a ton of times, but it will happen.
Well, we seem to be the community that's making the calls now.
We're getting a lot of canine service for free.
Got to be self-sufficient. Okay. Any other discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, as a new resident in the department and joining town, you know, we spend a lot of time here helping Joe, and it'd be a good thing for the town. you know, we spend a lot of time here helping Joe and it'd be a good thing for the town here. The program, I know you spent a lot of time talking to Bruce about it. They pay for so much of it that you would pretty much get a free ride for three years. And in that three years, as the chief said, you can plan your budget from there. But what it's worth having a dog on the ground right away as opposed to having to wait, there's nothing worse than in the middle of the night or in the middle of the day and you've got a search going, you have to wait 45 minutes or longer for a dog to get there. You're losing time and opportunity, and I think this is a great thing. I really do.
Yes.
Didn't Officer LaFleur state that over the last five years, canine units were called 14 times?
I do believe that was the number.
We actually answered this to you last week or the week before. Officer LaFleur stated that's when they actually called for them, but there was a necessity for canines and they would have been helpful a lot more than that. The reason they didn't call was because of that 30 minutes to 40 minutes that it takes for them to get here, and having that is going to eliminate that.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? Questions, comments, concerns? No? I will make a motion.
I will make a motion to approve and have you sign it, sir.
I will second that. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Is seen done, call in favor? Aye.
When will this begin? When will it begin?
We, the next step in the process is to return this letter to the Stanton Foundation. They've already guaranteed us the money. We'll finalize the documentation through them. And then the step after that is to travel, I believe it's to Pennsylvania, and choose dog.
Oh, Officer LaFleur will?
Yes.
His owner?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think it's great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right.
If, if the kennel gets built at Mr. LaFleur's house, I'd like to see if he used the school, Can Task Force, to assist him with any needs he has over there. And we have the carpentry and electrical division in which we can help him out because he lives right in the backside of the school. So we'd be more than happy to, if we could, just help you out there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andre.
Thank you.
What was that, two minutes ago? Yeah? Okay. We're moving on? Treasury warrants and invoices, please.
Chairman, I will make a motion to pay payroll warrant 73 in the amount of $38,755. And vendor warrant 75 in the amount of $790,564, dated November 30th.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor? Aye. Ladies and gentlemen. Okay. Hey, everybody, Stanley. Hey, Stanley. I will make a motion that we have paid, we approve warrant number 74 in the amount of $210.97 dated 11/30/2015.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Aye. On extension.
On extension. And I will make a motion that we approve warrant number 76 in the amount of $1,980, dated 11/30/2015.
On second.
Motion's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
On extension. I only have a first, Lawrence. New business, Mr. Lavash, do you have any new business?
You know, I'd just like to mention that the tree lighting was well attended. There was a lot of people involved in it. The trips was open, the gas pack was open, the ducts was open, the spa was open, everybody was, the pad was open. It was done, she puts it together. She answered. The decorating committee was down, decorated the whole place. I think it all went pretty well.
I'll put a thank you out to everybody for your participation in that. Thank you. Mr. Gagner, do you have any new business?
I was on the winter preparedness conference call with MEMA and DOT, just talking about how the state's prepared. The thing I was concerned with is any reimbursements that we may need in an emergency for MEMA. And they're saying that with everything that's set up right now, there should be no later than 60 days of payment to the town in the event of an emergency. And so I got them.
Okay. I do not have any new business. Our next meeting will be December 8th, 2015 at 7:00 PM. I'm sorry, Tom. Do you have something, Tom, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so now MEMA reimbursement, is that for upcoming events or past? Upcoming?
That was Governor's Captain's call.
Yes. We're going to break the work.
That is upcoming. Thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 8th, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Motion to adjourn. Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.